And, uh, she had some work to do. She checked out the agenda, is what she now, she had work to do. She'll usually check the agenda on the town side, side.
If it's interesting.
All righty, we ready? Call to order, the November twentieth, twenty nineteen, meeting of the zoning board of appeal. As far as meeting procedures go, the clerk will read the case into the record, the applicant will make their presentation, the applicants need to come up to a microphone, you're welcome to sit in the chairs there, state your name and address. At that point, the board will address the applicant with any questions or for clarification. The applicant will have a chance to obviously respond to those. The board will go out looking for anybody in favor of the request to come up and speak. If you want to speak, again, go to a microphone, state your name and address. The applicant will be given a time to answer any questions. At that point, the board might continue with additional questions if that brings up anything. Then at that point, we'll go out to the board for, out to the audience for anybody in opposition that would like to speak, that'd come up, state their name and address. The board, the applicant will have a chance to respond to that, that portion of it. Once the public hearing is closed, we go into deliberations. Occasionally, we will come out of deliberations, at that point, the public input is closed, we might come out for some clarification. Those who wish to speak need to go to the microphone. All conversations come through the board, it's not a conversation between anybody in the audience and the applicant. It's the board who's under the review here and asking the questions, we'll try to track them and keep up with it. If you have a phone, would you please put it on vibrate or turn it off? As far as notifications or the final decisions, you're welcome to stay around, or you can call the town planning office in the morning for information.
Do you have your mic on?
It looks like it should be on.
What's the meaning?
I don't know if we can ask the audio folks to turn it up a bit, or if I'm mumbling tonight, but we'll start with some introductions, please.
Lauren Gandia, associate planner.
Brendan O'Brien, alternate member.
Neil Dunn, full member.
Jackie Bernard, full member.
Suzanne Brunell, full member.
Mitch Feig, alternate member.
All right, we'll do some housekeeping first. I think we have minutes from last month's meeting, if everybody had a chance to review them. Do I have a motion, are there any questions or concerns over them? Nothing?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a second.
Second.
Those in favor? Aye, opposed. No town council liaison report. And we do, the board does reserve the right to continue the meeting if it runs late, I don't expect it to tonight, but it's always a possibility. Usually around ten o'clock, we evaluate, and if it looks like it's going to go for a long period of time, there would be a continuation meeting on?
December fifth.
December fifth. Thank you, Laura. I guess short of that, we have a regional impact reviewed we need to do prior to starting the meeting.
Mr. Chair, we have three cases for the board to determine whether or not they are of regional impact. The first is case number eleven twenty nineteen dash one, request for a variance from LZO four point two point one point three point C point one to encroach thirty-eight feet into the forty feet front setback for the construction of a bus stop shelter to Windsor Boulevard, map three, lot forty-five dash five, zoned AR one, Justine and Eric Pepper. Case two is case number eleven twenty nineteen dash two, request for a variance from LZO seven point seven point E point three to allow a changeable electronic message board sign which is prohibited. Thirty-nine Nashua Road, map seven, lot one one nine dash one, zoned C one, Fire Tree Realty Trust owner and McDonald's Corporation applicant. Case three, case number eleven twenty nineteen dash three, request for two variances from LZO four point three point three point A point two to encroach twenty-nine feet into the thirty feet side setback, and from LZO four point three point three point B point one to encroach fif- fourteen feet into the fifteen feet green space area for the installation of an outside refrigeration unit, fencing and retaining wall, twenty-seven Butrick Road, map six, lot thirty, zoned C one, and route one zero two P O D district, Butrick Ventures LLC, owner and applicant. Staff recommends that all these properties are not of development of regional impacts because they do not meet any of the criteria set out by the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
And do we have a voting sheet on that for this, or we just make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
You go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Does that work, or do we have to say accept, no regional impact? All righty, so I'm in favor of just presum- starting with case one, if that's all right with everybody, if anybody thinks we should address the rehearing differently.
I don't know, there might be a lot of people here for the rehearing, so.
I don't know, I'm, I'm in favor of going as it's, as it's noticed, but I'm not against that, otherwise, if anybody else would prefer.
It's just a vote, isn't it?
Essentially. Okay.
I don't care.
I, 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 I mean, if there's a lot of people waiting for that, and that's the last thing we do, even, even a short night is going to be an hour or two, might it be better to? I mean, that's my suggestion, if everyone else is opposed.
Well, it'll be down to the three of us, which is fine. I'm, I'm, either way, I could go either way, I would look.
Let's do it that way then.
All right, so we're going to go to the other business that was on the agenda, the rehearing for the variance from LZ, uh, case, excuse me, case eight twenty-one nineteen dash three, which was a request for a rehearing of the September eighteenth meeting, for the denial of variance from LZO four dot two dot one dot three dot four dot D to allow a water tank one hundred and fifty-six feet in height where only thirty-five feet in height is allowed, seven rear garden drive, Penchunk East. This is a public meeting, it will be a public meeting, but not a public hearing, there is no testimony or input from outside the, the board, so it's public and in nature that you're allowed to be here and listen to it, but no impact will be, no comments or anything will be coming into it. Any letters that were submitted to it are also not allowed at this point, it's for the board to evaluate whether or not we've done our due diligence, and if it is worthy of a rehearing, if there was to be a rehearing, it would be posted in a normal fashion. And seeing that, I do see one hand, please come up to a microphone, your name and address.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from this case.
Mr. Chair, I also need to recuse myself from the case.
Okay, thank you.
Well, hi.
Did you have a question, or?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is that the application for appeal was submitted after your deadline of thirty days.
This is, again, and that's why I went through the process, it is a public hearing, public meeting, but it's not a public hearing, so that will, if you wait and listen to the discussions that go on here, but technically, there's no public input or input from the applicant at this point.
I just wasn't sure what the, if you needed to know our perspective on your point of order, and how that came into play, because we do believe that it was after the fact, that's all.
Again, there's no public input, I apologize, those are the rules and the regulations that are handed down to us, in front of us.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That said.
There's a voting sheet on this?
So we need some Windsor case. Is it the big, thick one?
Yeah, there's a voting sheet right on the top.
I guess we have one of those.
Well, that's just yours.
All right, all right, that'll be me.
Is there anything else?
Everybody's had a chance to review it, we were all three members on the case previously.
Correct.
We have the whole file, I mean, this middle's here, I know I went through them as well as you, and we have a letter, so. I guess someone can read the case into the record?
Case number eight twenty-one nineteen dash three, request for rehearing on the September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, denial of a variance from Lenandery zoning ordinance section four point two point one point three point four point D to allow a water tank one hundred and fifty-six feet in height where only thirty-five feet in height is allowed, seven rear Gordon Drive, map ten, lot one forty-two, zoned AR one, Penachuck East, Utility Inc., owner and applicant.
So I think we've all seen the information, there was concern that it was submitted too late, that by itself would tell me that it would not be prudent to approve a rehearing. I guess what the thoughts from you two folks are.
I agree.
I agree.
That said, I know there was some concern from the applicant that the, it didn't make here. Laura, if I may, because there was some emails going back and forth that the town council was spoken to, and they were asked to interject their opinion on this, was there anything from the town council?
Nothing.
Regarding that, and I only ask that as a courtesy, in case there was.
I have not received anything from town council.
Thank you. So that said, I guess we would have to make our determination if we will or will not, or if someone wants to make a motion, and with the rationale why?
Are we comfortable making a motion to deny based on the late filing?
I'll second the motion.
That was just, that was a question.
That was, that was a question, are we comfortable, I think we had some guidance in that direction.
We did, from town, town council as well.
So I, I, I think I'm comfortable with it, to answer your question.
Okay.
Are you?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to deny the request for a rehearing.
I will second that motion.
And reasons for denial?
Are we required to give one?
I think it's prudent.
Okay.
Was it, go ahead.
Yeah, the application was filed late.
And upon reviewing the opinion of town council, it seems to be that town council agrees that in accordance with the law, that was in fact the case.
So those, the motion, if you would restate the motion, please?
Yep, it's the motion to deny the request for rehearing.
Second.
Those in favor? And we're saying due to untimely filing of the appeal?
Request for rehearing.
Do we have a clerk on this?
Pretty spare here.
You have, you have the?
I have the, yeah. I was just going to say, with regard to case number eight twenty-one nineteen dash three, the request for rehearing was denied, three to nothing.
Thank you.
That takes care of that one.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Welcome back, you didn't go out for sandwiches?
Oh, I did, you didn't see me? It just seems to me.
Thank you. Are you going to be the new?
Thank you.
She's bad.
Back to service. It's so good to be back.
You weren't going so long.
Not as long as last time.
Glad you're here, so we can read what has been written. Oh my gosh, yeah, you guys make me laugh.
Why, did you see my writing on that one?
I did.
I didn't review it.
But I'm sure it's better than mine.
Absolutely.
We ready for the next case?
Think so.
Let's do it.
Case number eleven twenty nineteen dash one, a request for a variance from LZO four two one three C one to encroach thirty-eight feet into the forty-foot front setback for the construction of a bus stop shelter to Windsor Boulevard, map three, lot forty-five dash five, zoned AR one, Justine and Eric Pepper, owners and applicants, there is no prior zoning for this property.
Who will be presenting? You may join him if you think he'll be commenting.
Eric Pepper, to Windsor Boulevard, Lenandery.
Justine Pepper, to Windsor Boulevard, Lenandery.
I'd like to first present some, what is it called? Surveyed measurements.
Absolutely. So this is something we do not have in the files?
Thank you.
Brendan, we have a letter.
We did.
Thank you.
Well, this is the one we had. Thank you. So I can read that to a public comment. Yes, I know it goes. If you'd like, you can either go right into the five points of law, everything in the variance is based on five points of law, or if you want to do a quick summary for something that may not be directly related, but kind of background information, whatever you're comfortable with.
Okay. There was also a letter from one of the butters that I saw.
Yeah, I think that's at a, almost like the public comment portion.
Okay.
Is that fine, Laura?
It should be read during public comment.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right, we're all learning every year.
So the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, the bus stop shelter will not impede the visibility of traffic entering the street, the shelter itself is heavy enough that it will not blow over, and will not interfere with town snow or trash removal services. It will actually serve as a reminder for drivers to proceed cautiously, as children live and play in this neighborhood, if you see it, image number two and three. The spirit of the ordinance is observed, this variance will not affect traffic as the bus stop shelter will be located where the bus company or driver determined where to stop. The requested setback distance is near a tree before a ditch, avoiding any loss of light, ear, or overcrowding. You could also see image three, four, and four A, I will present four A now.
Thank you. Throw the shelter, oh yeah, here the trees, the red trees, I first.
Substantial justice is done, the safety and well-being of the occupant or occupants using the bus stop shelter is diminished if the variance is not passed, the students will have to find other means of staying out of harsh weather conditions if they have to stand by the road. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished, the surrounding properties will not endure any loss from the change in setback for the shelter, or the shelter itself. The bus is going to stop at that specific location regardless, so a negative impact to the neighborhood traffic is minimal due to the variance. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary No fear and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property, and is unique because the driveway is about one hundred and forty feet long. The property is a corner lot bordering two other properties and two roadways, the homes on these two properties are separated by woodlands. The only abutter to clearly see the bus stop shelter would be at one Windsor Boulevard, and you can see image number five. Our neighbors at one Windsor Boulevard were here, but they had a hard time hearing, so they left. And the proposed use is a reasonable one, the variance allows our child and the occasional neighboring children to sit and wait for the bus undercover, protected from the elements and at a safe distance off the road.
Questions from the board?
How far is the structure from the road itself?
Twenty feet.
Okay.
If you put it, if you didn't need the variance, how far from the road would the shelter be if you implied with the statute, like if you didn't need the variance, like it wouldn't be here if you put it in a certain spot, how far back from the road would it be?
I don't understand the question.
It would be back where the water well is forty feet, you know, with a, with a water well spigot, how we measured.
It would be in the middle of our lawn.
How far back from the road is that, like, what's the difference, distance difference?
The requ- if I may, for you Mitch, the requirement is a forty-foot setback.
Okay, it's twenty now?
It's twenty now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I just thought I'd.
No, that was helping.
Thank you.
Right. It's twenty, yeah, there it is.
Well, so the setback, for clarity, it says you're going to encroach thirty-eight feet into the forty-foot setback, so that would not be twenty feet.
Yeah, they changed it from twenty to two, it looks like.
The, the measurement for the setback is from the, um... What's that term? From the easement.
I'm very confused now. The, the pictures say twenty feet, but our...
The setback is not a measurement from the street, basically.
No, the setback is from the right away in property, and so...
Right, from the property line.
So the...
How many feet from the street is the proposed structure?
Twenty.
Thank you. I don't know what the rest of you are talking about, but. Don't even, I don't even, it's okay. Because the applic- the application says to encroach thirty-eight feet into the forty-foot setback, and we have pictures that say twenty feet into the setback.
Right.
So we've got conflicting.
The, the setback measurement is from the, from the house towards the street, that's how they determine that, from what I understand.
No, it would actually be from the property line at the street, so there's a fifty-foot, what are we doing on roads if that road is?
I can help clarify if the board wants to.
Please do that, Laura.
When the application was initially submitted, the twenty foot that's indicated was from the edge of pavement, from the actual street, not the property line, so that, what you're seeing is twenty feet to where he wants it from the street, from where the property line is, which is, he's going two feet from where his property line is, so if you do some math, and I'm not asking you to trust my math, but it'd be like eighteen feet from the road, but it's encroaching thirty feet, thirty-eight feet into the front setback.
Got it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Why wouldn't it, why wouldn't you just set it where you didn't need a variance? Like, why not put it further back so it doesn't encroach? The str- I'm just, the structure, like, why wouldn't the?
Our property, our property does not allow that. We would have to put the shelter on, in the middle of our lawn, which would not look appealing.
And the bus company prefers that our son be at the end of the driveway.
And so the bus stop is at your driveway?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that just for your child, or is it for additional children in the neighborhood?
Two additional children in the neighborhood.
Anything else from the board? I'll give you a minute and go out to the audience. Anybody in the audience in favor, wishing to speak? Seeing none, anybody in the audience with, opposed or with questions? Seeing none, it's back to the board.
I think there's the letter.
There is a letter for the, I guess that would have been in opposition for the first group, so go ahead and please read that one.
This is from Kathleen Morgano. Dear Miss Gandia, my husband Steve and I own the property at four Windsor Boulevard. My husband is currently working in the New York area, but we hope to return to our home in Lenandery when he retires. We ask that you reject the zoning variance request pending from our neighbors at two Windsor Boulevard to build a bus stop enclosure in their front yard. From the photo supplied, the wood box-like structure is unsightly and appears unsafe, in parentheses, unless anchored with footings, question mark? Also, we are not in favor of this because it would set a precedent for more requests in the future. Are we going to allow each home on the street the same consideration? Are the school bus drivers offering door-to-door service to each family? We have owned the four Windsor property for more than thirty-five years, our children attended self-school and the high school. When my daughter started first grade, the school bus stop was at the corner of Windsor Boulevard and Breton Drive, this is about a quarter mile from our home, about six children would be picked up there each morning. As families moved in and out of the neighborhood, their bus pickup point for my family changed, moving to between five and seven Windsor. By the time my son started first grade, seven years after his sister, there had been quite a change in the school age population in our stretch of the road, my son was... My son was the only child being picked up before the Breton stop, and the bus driver kindly began picking him up in front of our house. There was never a time that there was a bus stop, that there was a bus stop was in front of two Windsor because our neighbors at one Windsor and two Windsor did not have school age children. I am relaying this history because neighborhood demographics change. Children grow up, move in and out. Some of the surrounding homes have changed hands four to five times. The bus stops have changed to accommodate the children living there at the time. I think it is great that the bus driver picks up children in front of their home, but certainly the driver couldn't offer this accommodation to every home on the street, and wooden bus stop structures at every house would certainly be an eyesore. There are other ways to keep children safe and warm on frigid mornings. We would like to remind neighbors that we all chose to live in New Hampshire where the weather can be a challenge. We chose the neighborhood in part because of its wooded, spacious lots, and yes, those long driveways. Sincerely, Kathy and Steve Morgano.
Does that bring up any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, I see that you presented to us a picture of the structure, and it is seven and a half feet high. It is 41 inches, uh, for the width, and it's 42 inches deep. And it has a, um, a roof on it. So I can clearly see where one side is open, and I assume that would be open to the street, the backside. Is the backside open as well?
No.
Okay, so you could not see your child from your home if the child, your child, or how many children were at this bus stop? Three? So you couldn't see if three P, three children were in there from your house?
Correct.
Okay, cause it is closed on the outside.
There, there's a bench inside there as, as well.
So, does this structure fit three children?
Two.
So if there are three children that wait in front of your home, and only two can get in, there's still one out, right?
One, one child is temporary. It's, uh, in a week, once a week. He's an older, older student.
The structure appears that it's, it's movable, so it does not, it's not built to where you'd like it. It can be moved and-
It, it's quite heavy. It takes three large men.
We have not placed it because we didn't have the approval, but once we earn the approval, we will place it, and it'll be, it'll be secured.
So the, it, it's rather tall as well, seven and a half feet high?
That's at the front, because water drainage will go back.
So the backside is roughly?
Eighty-two inches.
Okay. So it's still quite tall?
Yes.
Even-
My, my son will be tall. I'm, I'm six-five, and he's already, he's in first grade, he's already as tall as her, basically.
Um, and this structure, you're gonna leave it there year-round?
Yes. Again, it's, it's quite heavy to move.
And since you, you can't see the child or children that would be in that box anyways at the edge of the street, having it closer, because you have plenty of room, front lawn, there's no advantage, no, no advantage to having it at the street or closer into your property, cause you do have enough room in your front yard? Because you still can't see the child or children that are in the box from your home? So the advantage of having it closer to you, possibly so that, um, you could see that your child or children go into it while they're waiting for the bus versus it's even further away? You still, you can see them enter, being closer. You have enough room there to put the box closer to you for safety for the children? Cause I assume this is for safety, as well as weather protection?
My son will be seven in, in a month or so. He's, I'd rather have him in a safe, safer area.
So the location of the bus stop is primarily determined because the bus company had, you know, communicates with all, all the parents that have children that are being picked up, and that our son does get picked up at the end of our driveway. That's what the bus company determined when they made the route, and they want us at the end of the driveway.
At that specific spot.
And so that's why we thought we would put the shelter there primarily, because that's where they want him to be. It doesn't make much sense to have a shelter further in our property when that's not where they want him to be, to be picked up.
So all children are required to wait at the end of their driveways to be picked up?
Within the neighborhood.
Within the neighborhood.
Within the neighborhood, the bus company tells you on the first day of school where they'd like you to be for pickup. In our son's case, we're the first house on the corner, he's the first child picked up. There's another child, uh, two houses up, that she asked to have walk over to, to where we are on that corner. Um, and then there's a third child who lives about five houses up, who on a, for a temporary basis comes down once or twice a week because his mom works. And so we helped get him on the bus as well.
In addition to our, our driveway is an incline, it's not a flat surface. And all that area that you're seeing in the pictures, that's also at an angle. It's, it's not a flat spot for a shelter to be located. And to reiterate, the only neighbor to see this locate, this shelter would be number one, which is across the street.
Everyone driving by is actually gonna see it.
If they're driving by, yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Anything else?
Could you bring up image one? I'm, I'm trying to visualize, cause it does look like there are other spots, you know, it doesn't look like it just has to be in the middle of the lawn if it was in, in a spot setback appropriate amount. Is that number one?
This one?
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to see. To show where it is, yeah, see that little X in white box? And then I think that green line, is that where the, where it would have to be beyond that?
Right.
To the left of the white box is my fence.
So it could be, I mean, is there any reason, anything special about the property that it couldn't be set behind that green line? It could be along your driveway. I get that the bus company wants them closer to the road, but-
What we, what he would have to do is, I would not use that shelter, I would have the garage door open. He would have to hit a special code to close it, and then walk 140 feet while the bus is waiting for him at that corner.
But why couldn't it be placed anywhere behind that line?
Again, that area that you're looking at, beyond that green or yellow line, is a incline or decline, depending on how you're looking at it.
But, like, what type of incline or decline? Because it, you know, this, or is it?
I, I didn't, I don't have a measurement for that, sorry.
The other properties in the area have a similar dri- I mean, it doesn't have to be 140, but similar long driveway inclines and declines?
Yes, some are worse than ours, some are rounded off.
I've got no more questions.
So, uh, a variance goes with a property forever, and a, um, to the letter that was written, and one of my questions is, when, when the kids grow up or you move out, then that shed is still, excuse me, the bus stop building, whatever you wanna call it, is still allowed to stay there. So I kinda have a trouble with that. Variants go with a property for life, and, um, I, I don't know, it's-
Could there-
The bus stop could change next year to two houses down if there's a younger child, and the bus company determines that. So I guess I'm trying to figure out how it solves the problem if it's a moving target from year to year, and other kids are walking further than 140 feet to get there. And if it does switch that, your child would be walking even further than there. So I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around that.
Could you make a special circumstance where it's a temporary variance till he's in high school to drive?
Um, not legally, there's, uh, some, okay, there's some allowances, uh... No, well, no, we can't. It goes with the property forever. The only allowances under the state, um, statute is for handicapped ramps and stuff of that nature, that would go away once the person no longer needs them. So I mean, we're kinda... So, uh, again, that's why I'm bringing it up. It's kinda hard to, to wrap around, and variance goes for the life of the property. And, uh, I guess, and, and to the letter, and to my own concerns, if the bus stop moves next year, then it, it's kinda obsolete anyway, but still allowed there.
Which I would then remove, and our neighbor would not be unhappy.
I mean, we've lived in that property for three years, and that, that neighbor has not been there for three years. And there's, in their letter, they hope to return. Okay, well, we live there now.
Yeah, but again, it gets, my, again, my concern is, it, it goes for the life, but anyway.
Sure.
Anything else from the board?
I have nothing else.
Nothing for me?
Good, good, good?
Good.
Ready for deliberation?
We'll take it under, go into deliberation, thank you.
So you have one for the record, right?
I have one for the rec, I have-
And the bulge, yeah.
Conversations, thoughts? Go right to the five points?
No, I think we should have a conversation. So the thing is, is we're, we're bound by our zoning ordinances, and I just wanna clarify that a variance comes into play because there is something either unusual about the property, or there's no other alternatives, and it prevents someone from enjoying, um, their property, keeping it very simple. So, and, and that's our variance laws, bylaws, that's what we have to do. There's other spots in which that structure could be placed. And, and we've got, uh, pictures, we've got testimony. I'm just, I'm having a hard time finding, um, the true essence of the variance, that there's no other alternatives, or there's something very special about this property that needs a variance, which the variance will stay for the life of this property.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree as well.
I do as well. I do as well, excuse me. And, and also the fact that it could be a moving target next year if the bus company decides to pick up elsewhere. But the heart of it is, is really the five points of law and, and the-
The basis of which, how we determine what we can and cannot do-
Absolutely, yeah.
Is, is exactly our zoning guidelines that we have to stick to.
So that said, the five points of law?
Granting the variance would or would not be contrary to the public interest because...
Would? I don't know if it would. I, I mean, my concern is more the uniqueness of the property.
That's mine as well. I don't know that it would be contrary-
Yeah.
Just either.
Yeah, so I, I would say would not be contrary.
I would agree with you there.
I agree, would not.
Well, I only think it is because it, the 40-foot setback on the front, front edge, and this is facing the road, even though, even it's a corner lot, usually it's a shed somewhere on the side or the back. We're trying to keep it open and airy, so I-
I have a problem with it too. I think it's altering the character of the neighborhood to put something that close to the road.
However, I guess you had three would not, so if you were going with a consensus.
But now that you say that it, it's a shelter, and it, yes, it would alter the character of the neighborhood, so I'd like to change my vote.
Oh, absolutely.
So it would be contrary to the public interest, this is my vote. Okay, so we've got three. The spirit of the ordinance would or would not be observed?
See, I think it would.
I agree.
I mean, I read the spirit as this area is developed for agricultural, forestry uses, water quality preservation, residential use and public use. I don't think it violates the spirit.
I agree on that aspect, yep.
Well, the, the spirit, again, it kinda covers public safety and, and character, and they're very similar to the first one, so... Again, it, it's the front edge, it's front-facing, I, I think it, it, um...
Well, we're going into, that's the safety issue, and I, I think that close to the road with a structure like that, particularly as you were commenting, that the opening is in the front, so you can't see the child. That has to do more with the structure than that, than the law, but, um...
So two would nots and three woods?
I'm gonna want that, too. I don't think that, I don't think the spirit is being observed. If we're gonna put a shed at every bus stop, then that's going to change the nature of the neighborhood, and, um, the idea is to keep it clear from the road, so the cars that are coming by. I just envision my child sitting in that box with some car coming careening around the corner, um, that close to the road.
I have to change my vote again, then. I agree. I agree. Yeah, you are.
Would, would not, would not, would not, would.
Granting the variance would or would not do substantial justice?
Well, I think it's a benefit to the applicant. I feel it's a benefit.
Yes, benefit to the applicant, absolutely.
I agree.
I agree.
But isn't that supposed to be overweight of, of the general impact in, in the public sense? Kinda to the point, if everybody put them there, then that's substantial justice because it benefits an individual homeowner if they put one there?
It's any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the public. I don't know what the public gains by.
Benefit to the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public or to other individuals. So I don't think there's... Being close to the road, though, we could, we could debate that, the harm to the general public at that point. I mean, 20 feet is, it's, it's real close, you know?
I say would not.
I say would.
I say would not.
I say would.
I say would.
Tree would.
Okay. And the woods, uh, your reasoning?
The gain to the applicant outweighs-
Okay.
Any loss to the general public. The gain to the applicant outweighs any loss to the general public.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties, would or would not be diminished? I don't really, I didn't see anything in the packet that would substantiate either way.
Well, the applicant said the surrounding properties would not lose any loss, and from the change in the setback, the bus is gonna stop at that location anyway, so no negative impact to neighborhood.
Again, that's subjective, though.
Yeah, I is...
I think this is such a small structure, I don't think it would impact property values.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think it would have an impact.
Would not, I agree. Susan?
Yeah.
According to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because there is or is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property.
Well, I don't see anything that truly distinguishes it from other properties in the area or any properties in general, that most houses are setback and...
I agree with that.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
The proposed use is or is not a reasonable one?
It's reasonable.
Is.
I agree.
Is, yep.
Do we have any comments, restrictions, or any conditions?
No.
Nope.
Nope. Okay, we're good.
Does anybody have a motion?
Do we have a consensus? Or do you have a consensus?
It would appear that way, but I guess it will depend on the motion that's made.
Mr. Chairman, in case number eleven twenty nineteen dash one, I move to deny the request for a variance from LZO four two one three C one to encroach thirty-eight feet into the forty-foot front setback for construction of a bus stop shelter.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? We have five people.
Yeah, we do.
So, the motion is granted, the variance is denied. There'd be a different way to do those. And we do, due to safety concerns and for the reasons stated here.
In case number eleven twenty nineteen dash one, a request for a variance from LZO four two one three C one to encroach thirty-eight feet into the forty-foot front setback for the construction of a bus stop shelter, Two Windsor Boulevard, map three, lot forty-five dash five, zoned AR one. Justine and Eric Pepper, owners and applicants, the request for variance was denied.
They denied, they denied the first variance. They denied the first, the first variance. They denied it.
Me?
It's not your turn yet. It's my turn now. Thank you.
Do we have a...
I think you should move the chair when he goes. I think you should move the chair up there, because he's gonna have a really hard time hearing you guys back there. I mean, I can stay and help.
So, the next case, ready to read it? Are you here for the case dash two?
Yes.
Okay.
McDonald's.
Yes.
Case number eleven twenty nineteen dash two, a request for a variance from LZO seven seven E three to allow a changeable electronic message board, menu board, which is prohibited. Thirty-nine Nashua Road, map seven, lot one nineteen dash one, zoned C one. Fire Tree Realty Trust owner and McDonald's Corporation applicant.
So, are we not going in order in the, yeah?
Oh, geez.
Well, there we go. Two's after three today. I apologize, I'm just trying to get our documentation in place, so...
That's fine. I'm just excited, so, you know, I gotta get up here and go.
We cleared your audience for you. Sorry about that.
I'm so grateful for that, because you never know when they're gonna have something to say.
So...
And I'm also grateful that you limit your meetings to ten PM, because I was at a meeting once until two-thirty in the morning.
We have been here till one in the morning.
So, no letters or anything?
No letters, no...
Who will be presenting, please?
My name is Tracy Diehl, T R A C E Y D I E H L. My address is sixty-four eighty-seven Hilliard Drive, Canal Winchester, Ohio, four three one one zero. I represent McDonald's Corporation and the sign manufacturer, so I can speak to both. And I'm also an expert in the sign industry, so I can also speak to that as well. So, I'll be happy along the way to answer any questions that you have. So, the proposal is for McDonald's to remove the existing menu boards and replace them with what are considered to be digital menu boards. This is something that's completely out of the local store owner operator's control. This is a corporate mandate because the existing menu boards are obsolete. So, we have a situation where you have a product that's in place that can no longer be replenished as the menus change, or as the menus come out, or become in disrepair, or as the structure itself gets damaged, or, I mean, I've heard some, this year I've heard so many cars driving into menu boards. So, as the structure itself becomes dilapidated, it can no longer be repaired because the product is obsolete. McDonald's is no longer going to be making paper menus. The reason for that is because McDonald's has embarked, well, it's been almost twenty-four months now, on this green initiative, an energy-efficient, eco-friendly way to provide menus to the customer without damaging the environment. So, the new menu boards are paperless, which reduces waste in landfills. They are energy-efficient LED, which the existing menu boards are fluorescent, so this takes the place of ballasts and light bulbs ending up in landfills. And the new menu boards are designed to strategically move people through the drive-through at a pace that reduces emissions. So, by providing a clear, concise, crisp image that's visible to the driver in the drive-through, the menu board is going to help cars to keep going and make their order, and hopefully reduce stacking in the drive-through, which reduces idling, which reduces emissions. So, overall, their intent is to help the carbon footprint. So, the thing about this is, is that it's not something that the store owner can work around. The store owner can't, won't be able to get menus, won't be able to have menus. And the menus are necessary to the operation of the business. The business cannot exist without them. The menu boards that are currently out there are double in size to what's being proposed. So, what's being proposed is a substantial reduction in sign area. The existing menu boards are typically forty-two or forty-three square feet each, maximum forty-five square feet. Those would be removed, and these are, the menu boards themselves are seventeen point six square feet. And then the proposed pre-brows, because it's a three-panel system of three menu boards that work together in each lane. There's two lanes. The pre-brows is eight point eight. So, the total menu board square footage for both lanes would go down from what's currently out there, which is roughly ninety square feet, down to fifty-two point eight, or fifty-two point six square feet. So, it's also a substantial reduction in square footage. Now, the medium that is used, you know, when you're, when you're an artist, you have clay as your medium. You have paint as your medium. Sometimes your medium is fabric, if you're a quilter. Sometimes your medium is digital. And in this case, the medium that's being used to present the menu is, in essence, digital, but it is no different than a Kindle. It is no different than picking up your phone and seeing an image on your phone. It is a static image. It does not scroll, flash, or animate. It is fully programmable to the board's expectations, or restrictions, or conditions. And I've brought with me a video that I'd like to show you. Because otherwise she won't know it's a video if I don't turn the sound up. So, as you can see, this is the menu board. The image is static. It does not change. It does not scroll, and you're gonna hear me talking in a second, and I'm sorry. There's a glare from the camera. Talking to myself. There's a glare on there. But no animation, static image. So, that is a completely static image. I've also brought with me some other images that I could show you. If you're interested in seeing what it looks like dimmed at night, I can show you that as well. It will be substantially less lighting than what is out there now. The lighting that ends up coming off of the menu board, now this is an existing menu board. This is a pre-brows. You guys don't have those here.
Laura, do we need these for, these videos for...
I don't have video. I don't know.
You don't have the video? I sent you the link to the folder. I can resend it to you.
Okay.
So, this is what the existing menu board looks like. Okay, this is what's out there right now. That's an existing, that's what a pre-brows would look like for the digital.
Was there a prior case on this? That sign looks large. The existing one.
I don't know, but that's what the pre-bra, that's what the menu board would look like. And this is what it would look like at night.
No prior zone.
And this is the particular image that, I'm standing about ten feet away from the menu board, and that's what it would look like at night. And if you notice the menu board in the background, I'm even just a little bit further away from it, and it's barely visible. So, what we have here is a situation where we have a medium that's being used to represent a menu that's necessary, and that medium happens to be digital, hence the reason why we're here to ask for a variance.
So, before we go further, so the applicant is McDonald's, the property owner is Fire Tree Realty. So, Fire Tree Realty owns the building?
They would own the land, and McDonald's has rights in their land lease from them.
So, until the lease expires?
Yeah, it's like a thirty-year or forty-year lease. McDonald's isn't going anywhere.
Well, I'm not concerned about that. They could open a bigger, different unit down the street. So, Laura, the, it stays with the property, but the property is not the applicant, so I'm just a little confused.
Right, the variance would stay with the property.
And so, the applicant can be anybody?
They said they, they have the owner's signature on the page.
Yeah, so we...
They have the owner's signature on the page that designates Tracy.
As a representative, but as the applicant, too, I guess, that seems bizarre. All right, it seems a little kind of...
It's very, when you get into fast food, it's very convoluted.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
So, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the proposed menu boards are essential to the nature of the existing drive-through. People wouldn't be able to use the drive-through restaurant without a menu. The public needs it in that case, because it's for the people that are actually going there to use the drive-through. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the proposal is in keeping with the standards of seven point one A through G. The business cannot continue without, the substantial justice is done because the business cannot continue with an obsolete menu board that would eventually be irreparable. There is no other alternative. The greater good is to the public. The public that's using the property, they need the menus. It's, the benefit isn't really to the applicant. The benefit is for the people that are looking to use a McDonald's to be able to continue to use it. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. This is an existing drive-through, and there's no change to their current use. The menu board replacement would reduce the sign clutter. It would reduce the size of the signs that are in the drive-through. So, therefore, that actually benefits surrounding properties and enhances the overall use of the property. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. The menu boards benefit the public. They reduce sign clutter. They reduce the impact on the environment from paper waste, and they're energy-efficient. Also, the new menu boards are necessary for the safe flow of traffic in the drive-through, but these menu boards are only intended for viewing in the drive-through. They don't draw attention to the property like other signs do. They don't animate, scroll, flash. They only change for breakfast, lunch, and dinner in the blink of an eye. So, essentially, we call them digital because that's how the image is deployed, but they're not digital in the sense of what antiquated codes consider digital signs to be. Antiquated codes consider digital signs to be Walgreens Target CBS, the red little bulbs that are screwed into the sign sitting on the corner of an intersection. This does, this is not for that. It's not intended to draw attention to the property, and it's only intended for the use of a menu. The purpose, the proposed use is reasonable because the request is for signs that are going to reduce the square footage and that are not visible beyond the drive-through, and that are oriented towards the back of a lot and shielded by landscaping. If the criteria in paragraph A, I don't know if it's met or not met, but I answered the question anyway, so I'll continue. Menu boards are essential to the use of a drive-through, and this change reduces at any existing sign clutter. The positive impact these new boards will have on the environment and the traffic flow is essential for the business to continue and operate properly. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
You stated, you stated that now there is not a preview board?
There is not a preview, and I visited Taco Bell, I believe it was across the street or in that vicinity, and I also visited Wendy's, and they all have pre-brows menu boards. And the KFC Taco Bell, I think it is, their pre-brows is actually the size of our menu board that we're proposing. So, their pre-brows is actually substantially bigger than a typical pre-brows.
So, they, there'll be one pre-brows per lane?
Yes.
And then your additional, your two-panel?
Two panel, two menu, yes. It's a dual panel and a dual panel, and then a single panel and a single panel, so...
And they're only lit on the one side facing the driver?
They're only lit on one side. They're off when the business is not open. They don't emit any sound.
And I, what was the square footage of those?
The dual panels are seventeen point six square feet each, and the single panels are eight point eight.
And you, you talked about the ability to change them or dim them, if need be. The other thing, which is good, because I, although they should be brighter, less bright than the existing ones. The only other thing I noticed is you use a nit, a nit tar as a, some kind of measurement that I'm not familiar. I'm familiar with lumens and lux, and I've been in lights and lighting for a long, long time. So, what is a nit tar, and why do you use that?
I don't know.
That value as opposed to something that maybe someone would understand like lux and lumens?
I don't know what the difference is. I'm not an electrician. But what I can tell you is that I have seen a illumination, I guess it's like a planogram that shows you how far the illumination... how far the illumination would stem from the board, and the illumination doesn't stem more than two or three feet from the board. It's no more light than when you light up a Kindle or a cellphone.
Well, and then that isotropic or something, what do they call those? Actually, it was in lux or lumens, which was interesting.
Well, the boards are an Australian product, so Coats, the Coats Group who programs the boards, they're Samsung boards, they're essentially Samsung televisions that are rated for outdoor use that are inverted. So Samsung manufactures the TVs wherever, and then the Coats Group programs them, the Coats Group is an Australian company that have, they have offices here in the United States in Chicago.
And so.
And that's why there's differences, that's why you see meters versus inches, and that's why you see in some of the plans, you'll see lumens versus nits, because within, you know, different demographics, they use different language, and this is a national, it's actually an international program.
So just for those who care, if you converted the lux, you multiply by three times, three point four.
That's what a nit is?
No, no, the nit is the value they show, but if you wanted to make it lux is what's actually at the area, how far away the light that shines you is lux, lumens is what's being projected out, so it would be actually lumens, that would be three times that, if you cared it. So as far as you discussed, if it was too bright or there were need for it to be dimmed, you would have to, the people would do that remotely, it would take a while for that to be done?
That can be done at the store. It can be dimmed at the store.
By the people from Australia or Chicago, or remotely?
No, by the local store manager and store owner, it can be dimmed at the store. We actually visited Salem, New Hampshire last week, and the board conditioned their approval that they would visit the boards after they were installed, and determine if the brightness was satisfactory to them, and then dim it at that time. Because the boards are fully programmable, the standard light can be dimmed down as well.
Laura, we don't have a, a light standard of any nature? Our sign lighting, or?
I'm not aware of one.
Nothing that I'm aware of.
So I do have.
So questions, yeah, other questions from the board?
So the lumens, it's one nit is equal to three point four two six lumens.
Correct.
Okay.
And they're brighter in the daytime, because of course, you know, have you ever tried to look at a screen or something in the daytime? And then they're dimmed down at night, because you don't need as much light to see them at night.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, um, a couple of quick ones. I'm trying to find that, there was a picture, are there, I was trying to understand, are there four separate signs, or just, because in one of the pictures, it looked like there were four little, like, two in each lane.
There is one, there's two in each lane, that's correct. There is a menu board at the front of the lane when you get up to the speaker, but before you get to the speaker, the second car or the third car can see the pre-brows board.
Oh, okay.
So the pre-brows board is what we call a single panel, because it's just one TV, and then the, the, the menu board itself is a dual panel, because it's two put together.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and these are, you know, I'm looking at the, I don't know which picture this is, but these are facing sort of where people come in off of, I'm trying to remember, is that Gilcrest?
They don't face the road, they actually face the interior side of the property.
Okay.
And so you can't see them from, I visited the site tonight, you can't actually see them until you get into the parking lot, into the back of the parking lot.
So the store in Leninary does not have a pre-brows board, correct?
No, it does not currently. But the three boards kind of work together, the single panel pre-brows and the dual panel menu board. The purpose of the pre-brows is for the pre-brows to suggest items that are quicker to repair, to prepare, for people that, it's a suggestive selling point for people that are, you know, in the drive-through, and there are people that go to McDonald's and don't know what they want, you know, there are some people that are like, I'm strictly going to McDonald's to get a Big Mac, that's what I want, but there are people that get there, like me, and they're like, oh, I want what I want. So the purpose of the pre-brows is during peak times especially, it's, it's kind of an opportunity for people to get in their mind, okay, I'm finally at McDonald's, let's go ahead and figure out what we want. The purpose is to get them through the drive-through.
So are we concerned with the number of signs and?
The numbers didn't need a variance, right?
Hey, I'm only going by what Richard may have told us.
Yeah, I don't, we weren't, throughout the entire process, the number of boards has never been questioned, it's just only been about the fact that they're considered to be digital.
So these would have been, I imagine, part of the, these would have been a part of the original planning board approval and department, because they're not the typical sign that we're thinking of is the McDonald's sign, or Joe's Haberdashery, or whatever, that we have those, those limitations on, so it is kind of out of, so it's really just down to that digital component. So the, the pre-brows signs, do they, they look to me like more there's, they're suggestion, suggesting three items, say, on the picture.
Yes, they would suggest three items.
And that doesn't scroll through and keep changing, and, and kind of come up with a, you know, today's special?
The answer to that question is that yes, it can, but the answer to that question is no, it would not, because this board would not allow a digital sign, and so the no scrolling, no flashing means that these have to be static in order for us to be able to get to the point where they can even be. We need the menu boards to be changed, because their existing menu boards are obsolete, so we're trying to find a middle ground. So a middle ground for us is to say, we're not going to have any animation, graphics, scrolling, or flashing, because we still need a menu. Does that answer your question?
And does the menu change, I think I read somewhere between lunch, dinner?
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
So three times a day it would change, make one change?
Yes, blink of an eye, breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Not no difference between lunch and dinner. Fascinating.
Yeah, there's not much difference.
They raised the prices, you know, smaller, smaller.
We say breakfast, lunch, and dinner, because there's not even real much difference in McDonald's menu boards these days anyways, because they include breakfast all day in a lot of locations. But we say breakfast, lunch, and dinner is because if they ran out of something during the day, there's the ability for it not to be on there. So it wouldn't be on the menu.
Anything else from the board?
Nothing from me.
What's that?
So you would make it static, so that would be a condition I guess we'd want in there. And then, so anything else on the five points law before we go into deliberation?
So, I do have one question, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
So if it's going to change three times a day, if you had a really great weekend and you ran out of a lot of stuff, morning, noon, and night, would it be changing constantly because you ran out of?
No, it can only change three times a day. So if there was something that ran out, it would have to be pulled off when the next change occurred.
Okay.
And why can it only be changed three times a day?
Because that's what the board's going to condition their approval on. That's hypothetical. I mean, in some places, the boards, they're fully animated, there's no restrictions, there's no problem with them changing, but in other places like here, where the boards are prohibited in the first place, we try to do what we can to make it as minimal as possible, so that we really truly are coming up against an issue of where it's just a medium, it's just, you know, paper versus screen.
Well, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Good.
We thank you very much, we'll go into deliberation.
Thank you. We've got a few more minutes.
Thoughts? My thought is that this isn't a typical signage that is, although it is signage, it is, it is digital, and it's electronic, and so maybe our, our ordinance needed to be changed, but this was more under the planning board purview on the original setup, because obviously they allowed to, I think whoever mentioned, they looked off the large, the existing ones, Suzanne. So apparently they don't fall into that measurement scenario that we have for signage, because it's not your standard signage, I guess, I don't know. It is, it is reduced, I guess, but.
Man, we think the standard is trying to attract the public to the location, this is not doing that.
It's more informational than, but again, we don't want those flashing like Las Vegas.
But there's reduce of clutter, it was a very nicely presented packet for information to show.
I thought of you when I saw clutter.
Me?
Yes.
It is less cluttered, yeah.
And they are positioned, assuming they're going in the same, which we would make that a condition, that they are not faced out there at the driver's view, and that's the intent, obviously, they could have driver to be able to see the menu board. And there's nothing on the other side there, it's wooded, and there's just steep slopes, I don't think there's anything that's ever going to go in over there.
Is there a reason we'd want to create some sort of, we talked about potentially restriction on flashing and animation, do we want to create some sort of restriction if that ever gets cleared, that something would happen, or is that just too?
Well, I think that restriction is to stay static, correct?
Correct, that's, as the applicant applied, that it was, it was going to be static.
My, my thought was simply if, you know, you woke up in the five years and they had got rid of that part, and everybody could see from the road the menu boards, do we?
Way backwards.
Well, that's right, fair enough, that's, I'm sort of.
That's why I said it was staying in the same location.
Practically thinking out loud, just.
No, and that's fair, and then I guess there is some conditional at other locations with the light output measurements are subject to the brightness, and although we don't really have a standard for measuring that, short of making sure they're not brighter than what's there, I guess, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know that I'm as concerned, just because I think they're not going to wind their, you know?
Right.
There's a benefit to making customers feel comfortable.
And they are shut off and they're closed.
So.
I think that's twenty-four hour McDonald's, though.
Well, remember, that might be.
It is the only one, yeah.
That is the only one? It is twenty-four?
Because I think it is. Because I don't think the Wendy's is, and I don't think the Taco Bell, whether KFC Taco, Taco Bell is, I think the McDonald's is the only twenty-four hour.
Do you know?
I don't know. I'm going to Google it.
Yep, easy to figure out.
I, I believe it is also, it's either that, or they have a lot of people cleaning all night.
Brandon, are you voting? All hours of the night.
You know, I can tell you, I've gone to that McDonald's once after midnight, so that's why I think.
Fair enough.
On the way from a, on the way home from an away football game.
That's exactly right.
Or a late zoning.
Exactly. It is, the Leninary McDonald's is open twenty-four hours.
Okay. All right, you're going to be lit.
All right, two points of law, five points of law.
Yep. Granting the variance would, would not be contrary to the public interest?
Would not.
Would not.
With conditions, would not.
It does not alter the essential character of that neighborhood?
It does not.
It does not threaten public health or safety.
Do we agree?
And it does not worsen what's already there, it actually makes it less?
The spirit of the ordinance would, would not be observed?
Would.
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 In our reasoning?
No threat to health, safety, or welfare, changing the signs, making them digital.
And we will, we will ma, I presume, make them static as we can, that has been agreed to. And, and not the typical electronic image that we all perceive, perhaps? You don't have to write all that, but it was, the conditions.
For the record.
The conditions of being static and changes only three times a day would effectively, and again, it's addressing a different kind of sign, so.
Granting the variance would, would not do substantial justice?
Would.
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 It allows replacement with better technology of current.
Better and more environmentally friendly technology.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties would, would not be diminished? Would not?
Would not.
Would not.
It's the same character of the neighborhood.
It's replacing existing signs with smaller footprint upside.
Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship, because there is or is not a fair substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property.
Well, this one doesn't really fit this model, as, as we're replacing something that was approved with today's. So sometimes these are hard to, the special conditions of the property?
Yeah, that wasn't a great answer on here, but I understand.
I mean, they're, they're existing, they were, they were approved, they didn't, they don't come into the standard sign calculation, apparently. So if we want with A, one, so if A one doesn't work, then we go back to special condition to distinguish it from other properties.
Well, it is a fast food restaurant that has drive-throughs.
Correct.
Is that a condition of the property?
It is.
All right, I, I'm, again, sometimes these aren't always clean and clear as I would think.
Why do you think A one doesn't work?
Pardon me?
Why do you think A one doesn't work? I would think it, just, if they're reading of it, it probably would.
Well, the unnecessary hardship is for the digital signage, which Dave has kind of made it non-digital, and so. It's, so it's not about the fact that they're there, and the old ones are brighter, I mean, the, the argument that they're reducing the clutter, and there's less light output, and they're going to be clean and not be as digital as one might think they are. Again, it gets back when you go literally, when I read it literally, it's, I don't see anything that's.
I don't either.
However, I, I, sometimes I think we have to step outside of that little box, because it.
So in other words, it does not make sense for it to be applied to this piece of property, given its uniqueness in the aspect that. that it must... It must have these boards.
Well, it doesn't have to have those boards. It doesn't have to have a drive-through.
Well, it has to survive, because that's what it is, is a drive-through McDonald's. So because it must have that, because it won't be a drive-through McDonald's anymore, but what is reasonable in today's technology for the replacement of this signage to even a smaller sign to be more efficient? So that in itself is its uniqueness. Because of being reasonable. What is reasonable?
It will reduce the clutter that's there, and they're approved previously, so it does address the... Our concern over digital or flashy moving signs, so...
I mean, if we want... If we were looking for specifics on the property, I mean, the fact that it's got a slope behind it, it's wooded behind it, it's backed up by commercial property.
Right, because...
Well, I had mentioned it does have that slope, which is the sign is facing that direction.
Right.
And I think that's where we could go.
Okay.
So basically, it's what is reasonable, too, because the literal enforcement of that can be what is reasonable. We can assess that. So we can use A1.
Yeah, I think we can get away with it. It's not...
The proposed use is or is not a reasonable one? Is?
Is.
Do we have the restrictions or comments or conditions? Okay.
So we read it's animated, is that...
Static image.
Static image.
So we wanna start stating as proposed, but list static image.
That to change more than three times, the menu to change a day?
Okay.
And then I think the... It says no... Like, we could say no moving, flashing, or noise-making, which are the other things that are not allowed if we... Except for the three times a day.
They can make noise.
Change.
Sounds like a casino machine change.
Can I make an off-the-record comment?
Sure.
You should condition it that it's only for the intended drive-through use, fast food restaurant, so that you're not setting a precedence for other people to come and try to go after this type of sign.
We could also say not facing the road, right?
Which is what other municipalities have done. They've conditioned it for only drive-through restaurant use.
I like it.
It could not be seen from the main road or something. I mean, it...
But it goes with the property.
True, but restricted, so it's not gonna be seen from the main road is...
Oh, I thought you meant the drive-through.
Drive-through use?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, if it was not a drive-through restaurant, they would take them down, I think.
They would be removed when McDonald's moved out, because it's their property. They wouldn't leave them.
So as submitted, I have static image, and not to change more than three times a day?
Face the lanes or the only... It's presented as only being one-sided, and that would face the people in the drive-through lane. So however, I think to keep it from being oriented any other way.
I mean, I... You know, do we wanna make it... I mean, one of the things that makes this more agreeable is that you only see it when you're really in the drive-through lane. I'm not sure that would be true for every...
Right, and so if they got busier and wanted to pull these out facing 102 or Nashor Road, I would not...
I wouldn't feel the same.
No, I wouldn't feel the same way either.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out how we might capture that, so...
Well, as it's proposed, the... There's some strong statements in here where it's gonna be located under the existing canopy. It's not changed. So that's why I was making the first reference as submitted, because there's some strong statements in here about what they will not do and what they will do.
Well, but are we better off putting it in with some clarity, so that, you know, two years from now?
Yeah, I know what we always say, as presented, but yes.
Well, because sometimes... Right, because sometimes, within that presentation, something is not agreeable.
Or we don't catch until after the fact, and it's... So you do have to be very careful about that, so... So in the same... I mean, we don't even have an outline, a document showing that it's going in the exact same place. I think our bigger concern is that it doesn't face 102 or the...
Right, then we need to talk about the size as well.
Okay, so not to face...
I guess I'm looking to see how it was described, so proposed.
Placed in the drive-through within one to two feet of the existing menu board, and within the drive-through lane for the pre-brows, stating that it's only for the drive-through lane.
For the drive-through lane.
Yeah, but if that drive-through lane was to change its orientation, because they wanna run along the side of the building like most of the ones you go through, then it would be facing 102. So...
Would we call this public thoroughfare? You're trying to come up with a general term that gets us... Because really, it faces the driveway, but you can't even really see it from that driveway until you're really right there.
Correct. You have to be on top of it, right?
Right.
You're there to conduct business. That's why. That's the only way you can see it.
We have a map, so we know if that's east, west, north, or south. Where's our...
Probably south, right?
Probably west. I don't know. That's... My thought is I would not want it facing...
Right, so just say, we don't want it facing 102.
102 or...
Not to be visible from... That's still pretty broad, because again, they're really just being seen as you drive up to the drive-through, so...
So not to be visible...
I don't know.
Route 102.
But that's still leaving a lot of space if they get moved.
I didn't know that we're...
So the images would not be visible.
Right. Those are maybe the only two rooms that have that McDonald's.
Yeah. Images not to be seen.
I would...
You could put them right at the edge of 102 and face them back the other direction, which I guess we wouldn't care either, but...
They put it on the side. They could put it still facing, you know, the building itself would be one way to do that.
So it would be safe to say images not to be visible on Route 102?
Or Gilcrest Road, I think.
Does Gilcrest even come into play at that point?
Yeah, if they were to clear everything else, it would be like shining over the roof of the penthouse on those Londonderry Ford, I guess. Or maybe 7-Eleven.
Okay. Is there any other conditions or comments or restrictions?
Size.
Size.
Okay, so the size.
Is that in the...
Yep. Digital board menu seventeen point six square feet, and digital pre-brows is eight point eight.
Per lane.
Yeah, put the numbers on there.
And there's two lanes.
Correct.
I think, wasn't there a one point one lane, so you may wanna limit it to... I don't know if we care.
Well, again, that gets back if they reoriented it and did something differently, so limited to...
The number four.
It's almost your turn.
Miss Andy Griffith, that's all.
Oh, that's terrible. It'll be on tomorrow.
I've watched him so many times, I know word for what he's saying.
I like hazer. That's my favorite.
I had time, size. Yeah, my static number of changing a day was three times.
And then static gets rid of flashing. We need to remove noise or moving? I guess static gets that, too, at least.
Well, they could still put noise through it.
Right, so maybe...
So that's not to include the... How may I help you?
Right, there is some noise.
That's true. Well, that's not the sign, really, I don't think, that does that, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Well, it's not the sign itself. It's the person working in the facility through some different means, but yeah, I guess it...
However, what was your... You read something about the verbiage in the flashing noise?
The particular zoning regulation was animated, moving, flashing, and noise-making signs are prohibited. Changeable electronic message board signs prohibited in all zoning districts. That's the one that we're seeking. So if we're... We're seeing to say it's okay if it's animated but static and makes no noise. I mean, that's basically... And changes three times a day maximum.
Yeah. Did you get no noise?
And then the only other thing is if we cared about it being coming too bright at some point, because it is adjustable.
I don't know how you'd regulate that. It's your new numbers.
I'm just bringing it up. The valid point is you're gonna burn out the television before you...
Right, and people have to be able to read it.
So I guess we'll... There was a mention that it was... Could be measured, but I'm not too concerned about it.
Okay. I'm not worried about it either. So that's it for...
Nothing for me?
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Case number eleven twenty nineteen dash two. Request for a variance from LZO seven dot seven dot E dot three to allow a changeable electronic message board sign menu board, which is prohibited. Thirty-nine Nashor Road, map seven, lot one nineteen dash nine, zoned C1. Fire Tree Realty Trust owner and McDonald's Corporation applicant to grant the variance with the following conditions and restrictions. As submitted, static image only and not to change more than three times a day. Images not to be visible from Route 102 and Gilcrest. Digital menu board shall not exceed seventeen point six square feet, and digital pre-brows board shall not exceed eight point eight square feet per each of the two lanes, and shall not make noise.
We didn't delineate the number of signs that they can actually put in there. We had...
So that was getting back to the as presented. So there was one preview per lane and...
Two menu boards per lane.
If I may for clarity, each of those boards is considered a menu board, where you put two together? Or is that one menu board with a size?
There's a dual panel and a single panel, so it would be no more than three panels total per lane.
And the dual you had the dimension on?
The dual is the seventeen point six, and the single is the eight point eight.
So the dual seventeen six.
So the single is essentially your pre-brows, and the dual is your menu.
Yeah, I got that right.
So not to exceed four menu boards total.
So what did you have for dimensions on the pre-brows?
Yep, the digital menu... Yeah, seventeen point six and pre-brows eight point eight.
Three feet.
Yeah.
And so it's two...
I thought it was three per. She said it's a four, but I thought it was three per lane.
No.
Two...
Because there's...
A dual panel, one dual panel menu board, and one single panel menu board per lane.
So that's three.
Right.
But they're put together. That's why.
Yeah, it's two boards. It's two footers.
So I put the dimensions, seventeen point six. Because that's the total dimension of those two together, the seventeen point six.
Somebody asked me the same thing. Why don't they just use one screen for the menu board? Because your televisions are big, but they haven't developed the technology to make it that way yet.
When you're reading it, you didn't limit the number. You just said the size was...
Per each of the two lanes. So each lane gets one digital menu board, not to exceed seventeen point six. And then the pre-brows board shall not exceed eight point eight square feet per each of the two lanes.
So you did limit the quantity and...
Yeah, okay. Or... That doesn't seem right to me, but...
Or per...
You're just giving the dimensions of the panels. You're not saying how many panels they're going to have. Am I missing something?
Well, the panels are seventeen point six.
Each panel is eight point eights, actually. So it's two eight point eights pushed together.
Makes the seventeen six.
And one eight point eight, yeah, so that's how you get it.
Because the seventeen point six is the menu board, yeah. And the pre-brows is only eight point eight.
I was wanting to hear it again, because it felt clear when I first heard it, but...
You run through it again? Sorry.
So the menu board is two eight point eights pushed together.
I want to hear what you actually have there.
Oh, okay. As submitted, static image and not to change more than three times a day. Images not to be visible from Route 102 and Gilcrest. Digital menu board shall not exceed the seventeen point six square feet, and the digital pre-brows board shall not exceed eight point eight per each of the two lanes, and shall not make noise.
I still don't see how that number is. Then limits the number of those signs. You've given the dimensions, but you...
So put one digital menu board and one pre-brows.
Per lane.
So just throw one in there.
For each of the two lanes, so... Or per lane.
The two point, I think is okay.
Sorry, getting into the minutia, but...
So then we would say for...
Per lane.
For two existing lanes.
Per lane.
She's gonna go back to Ohio, and they can put up eight.
Where two lanes...
Or Chick-fil-A could buy them out and move in and try to put up eight.
There you go.
Where two lanes exist. All right, so let me... Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant case number eleven twenty nineteen dash two with the following comments and conditions. As submitted, static image and not to change more than three times a day. Images not to be visible from Route 102 and Gilcrest. Digital menu board shall not exceed seventeen point six square feet, and digital pre-brows board shall not exceed eight point eight square feet per each lane where two lanes exist, and shall not make noise.
We still don't have the number of boards.
There's three boards, but they're different. Two are pushed together, which are called...
Why can't you just say one menu board and one...
Because the menu board is seventeen point six. It's technically two boards pushed together. Eight point eight times two is seventeen point six.
It's actually still one board, because it's one pedestal. So even though it's two panels, it forms the dual panel. It's actually just one menu board, because it's one footer.
I've said it six times, so if you guys all agree, that's fine. That's... I've heard, I've said it six times, so if you guys all agree, that's fine, that's me. I just don't know why we're not limiting the number of signs. I don't care about the size, you're not following me. I want one size and two signs, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. I don't know, am I not making sense, am I not clear?
No, I'm just, I thought we had it and then didn't hear it.
Right, I thought we had it and didn't hear it.
Just include another sentence to the effect of each lane will have one menu board and one pre-board, the pre-brow's board. I can just put one in front of the one you had. One digital board shall not exceed seventeen.
And one pre-board.
Per lane. Okay.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant case number eleven twenty nineteen dash two as follows. As submitted, static image and not to change more than three times a day. Images not to be visible from Route one oh two and Gilcrest. One digital menu board shall not exceed seventeen point six square feet. And one digital pre-brow's board shall not exceed eight point eight square feet per lane where two lanes exist and shall not make noise.
We have a second?
Second.
Those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Good night.
It's your turn now.
In case number eleven twenty nineteen dash two, a request for a variance from LZO seven seven E three to allow a changeable electronic message board sign menu board, which is prohibited. Thirty-nine Nashville Road, map seven, lot one nineteen dash one, zone C one. Fire Tree Realty owner and McDonald's Corporation applicant. The variance was granted with the conditions stated previously.
Thank you.
Well done. Very good.
Hi, my name's Chris George.
Just a minute, we need, we need to read the case in, well, we need to read the case in first. No, you, you may stay there.
I can't hear too well today.
No, that's all right, you may stay there, we just need to read the case into the record first.
Statement?
No, no, you may sit there, but we need to read the case into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
I don't mind at all, if it's easier to hear, I don't know if that's gonna make it easier, but if you. Oh, absolutely.
That's fine.
So we have two here.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hopefully it'll help. So I'll let you go that way and then I'll do it after the fact. So that's setback and this is green space.
Okay.
I'll leave them this way until we get there.
You want me to read it?
Absolutely, please.
Case number eleven twenty nineteen dash three. A request for two variances from LZO four three three A two to encroach twenty-nine feet into the thirty-foot side setback. And from LZO four three three B one to encroach fourteen feet into the fifteen-foot green space area for the installation of an outside refrigeration unit, fence, and retaining wall. Twenty-seven Butrick Road, map six, lot thirty, zone C one, and Route one oh two P O D. Butrick Ventures LLC owner and applicant. There's no prior zoning for this property.
Who will be presenting? If you state your name and address?
Uh, my name's Chris George. Uh, residential address sixty-seven Nashville Road, Windham. I own Mr. Steer Meats, twenty-seven Butrick Road.
All righty. And so you have the five points of law in your application, if you have it?
I have it right here, yes. Okay. I read them off?
Please.
You read off the five, yep.
Item number one. There'll be no. There'll be no harm to the public interest. On item number one. Item number two, spirit of the ordinance observed. The refrigeration unit will be in a screen, secured by a fence, vinyl, and adjacent to another C one property where no buildings or parking are proposed. But a detention pond and maybe a septic, if they ever build it. Uh, item number three. In granting the variance, there would be no gain to the applicant that is outweighed by any proceed, proceeded. My eyes. Proceed, loss to the, to the ground, uh, to the ground, uh, general public. Uh, and item number four, the adjacent property value will not be diminished. It is zone C one. And proposed buildings and parking are not near the project location. Only a detention pond and a proposed septic system. Uh, uh, item number five. The site is built and the location at the proposed unit does not create an unsightly appearance. Any, uh, alternative location would, would be seen from the parking lot. Can you read that? Parking lot. The proposed use, for the reason, the location is opposite the building service entrance and is not, uh, on the parking site of the building. It is a reasonable access, accessory use to the business. Now, this is what I've, I've got pictures here. My coolers are undersized, I, it's, I'll, I'll grow it. I've been bringing in, I have containers that I have to put on the onsite, just to put, you can look at these pictures. Containers, I have to bring, pull product out of my cooler when I get big loads in and put on the side of the building. It's an ISO going down one oh two. That would all be eliminated by fence around the, the unit. It's gonna be an asset to the, uh, to the property and to the neighbors. That's what it looks like right now. I've got, I bring a container and it's a refrigerated container, it's sitting on, it's sitting on the parking lot facing one oh two. I wanna get rid of that and just be able to contain everything right in that cooler. It'll be perfect. And it's right by the back door. It's not in anybody's way. My eyes aren't that good either. Uh, here's a site, uh, plans for the proposed, uh, build, what's gonna happen at the Elliott. It shows where they're building, it's nowhere near, uh, it's nowhere near their, uh, it's, like I said, it's in the corner, there's nothing, it was said in the, in the application. It's not in anybody's way, it's not in any, where anybody's gonna build. But that was, that's their application for, when they put up their, their project right there. And, uh, basically.
Is, is there a reason why you wanna attach it to your building?
Pardon?
Is there a reason why you would not attach it?
I don't have any, I can't go anywhere with it. I can't build, add it, make it bigger in the store, I can't add on the store. The only thing, it's just right by the back door in that little corner there. Where there's nothing, like I said, there's nothing proposed in that, on that site that's in the way. It's all been researched.
Questions from the board?
Why can't you attach it to the building?
Just won't, you can't do it, you see, it, uh, it won't, I'm, I'm maxed out on the size of the building.
Okay.
I'd be in the parking lot, I'd be on the drive, if the building is surrounded by the parking lot, I just can't do it. If I did that, I'd lose, I'd lose the driveway on the side. I'd lose the, lose the parking lot, I mean, it's, it's. If you see the building, you just, you can't do it.
Have you ever gone in there?
Oh, yeah.
You know how tight it is?
Oh, yeah, it's real tight.
It's very tight.
But, perfectly right, right opposite the back door, with the very receiving door. There's a dumpster there on the corner and be about twenty feet away from that.
Anything else from the board?
To make the business run, like I said, efficiently, successfully, and abide by the USDA and the OSHA rules, cause the cooler, when you fill it up, you gotta be careful. You have rules you gotta follow. The only way, like I said, I have to empty it out when I done empty it, but take stuff out to get stuff in, to make it, you know, OSHA safe too. And USDA, you have, at USDA, you have to, in the meat, in the food business, you can't put chicken too close to, to beef. You gotta, it's gotta be, I need the space. And I may be able to clean that whole yacht up. The racks, be able to keep them in the cooler. Get rid of that container. Refrigerated container, it's one way, right now, it's out there, it'll be there for about two, two months usually, two, three months.
How big is the cooler?
Twenty by twenty, I think I get this, it's right there, twenty by twenty.
Was that on there?
It's right, uh, there's, there's a plan right with the picture.
Oh, over there. I apologize. Twenty by twenty, eight foot high.
How high a fence can you put up around there without variance?
Did you wanna ask that question Suzanne?
I don't know.
I, the.
We should know the answer to that.
Well, it can't be over six feet, I guess, but that's actually residential. Uh, you can hug the property line, right?
This is C one.
So what do we?
I think it's eight feet.
I think it's eight feet. It's got eight foot high outdoor refrigeration unit, so if the unit and that answer the same height.
It would hide it.
Any other question? Anyone in the audience? Beth, Laura, no comments? I see no one in the audience opposed or in favor, would wanna come up back to the board. What do you do if you need another one? Go to another building? What do you do when this one's not big enough? Go to another building?
I'm seventy-three years old, I'm just trying to make it easier for myself and have my, maybe my kids take over. I've been doing this for forty-five years. I was, I started when I was twenty-eight, I opened up across the street and, you know what? The cooler that I have now is as big as the whole store I had before. I went from store that was two thousand square feet to six thousand square feet and a good portion of its cooler, but no, I don't. I think I'm maxed out right now.
So Laura, we don't have a good, other than the site plan that's there, we don't really have anything else. Usually we have more images, I know I'm on Google Maps now. And so I'm not, I'm losing perspective on this whole detention pond, what that's about, where it's at. Oh, I have it here, I just, I. With what was submitted, there's, there's very little with the, the one drawing, it shows a bunch of people around it, but it doesn't. So I don't see where where this pond is that.
I think if you go to the right, pull to the right, I think it's that.
Oh, so he's over here.
He's there, right.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's that usually is.
Well, it looks like on the map, the cooler's actually here. To the south, I guess that looks, it's kinda weird, but yeah. All right, um, no other questions from the board?
Not for me.
Does that help in the back? If you turn, you can see the detention pond here.
Yeah.
So this is his building.
So that's not how I was seeing it on the diagram though, I guess, maybe it's me just disoriented, but.
Yeah, cause here's his diagram, this is one oh two.
Right, and he's showing the, and he's showing it here.
So he wants to put it right here.
Right.
This is the detention pond that's referenced on the site plan in front of you, this is one oh two.
Right, but this. What was that?
The light bulb there. So you're not gonna see it.
But that was fun anyway.
That was interesting. All, all right, no, that's, that's. There we go, must be time to turn off the lights and go home.
I may be able to answer your question.
No, it was the detention ponds, I thought it was gonna be adjacent to the side where the, the cooler is, but it's actually on the other side. And so my bigger concern is the big lot that is part of Elliott or, or whoever, what they have intended there, because that's where it's really encroaching. And so it, there wasn't a whole lot of surrounding documentation to get that relationship, so. And the talk about that retention pond that's not on the side near the cooler or whatever, it's. So that whatever's gonna happen down here. Well, he has no green space there anyway, so how are we impacting the green space and where's the argument on that?
Well, it shows on the plan where the green space is.
If you go to the survey plan that was presented, you'll see the dotted line is the green space setback. So he's approaching into, seeking permission to approach into that green space setback and to the side setback.
So when you look at the actual photo, he's off the tard area and in that little green area, I guess, all right. And he's right on the property line, fourteen feet into fifteen green space.
So he's about one foot from the property line, which makes him encroaching fourteen feet into the fifteen feet green space setback and twenty-nine feet into the thirty-foot side setback.
So I guess the question is, why does it need to be so far back? Why can't it be closer to the building?
Cause he won't be able to get his vehicles around, service vehicles, I guess, was the point.
Fair, fair, the answer.
Okay, we're good? Yep, thank you, all right. So we'll go into deliberation. We have two, I guess, the same arguments being made for both. Do you wanna do one? Do the one at a time, so it's easier on the notekeeping?
Yep. So we're gonna do the first variance, four dot three dot three dot A dot two to encroach twenty-nine feet into the thirty-foot. Graining the variance would or would not be contrary to the public's interest?
Can I ask a question amongst this, like I've been looking at the, um, at the statute here. So four point three point two B says outside storage, any outside storage in the commercial district is subject to planning board approval. Is that only when they first put the building in?
Which one are you looking at?
Well, so I was looking.
Four point.
Four point three point two B.
We're, um, we are gonna do four point three point three A two.
I know, I just happened to notice that when I was on the same page, like I'm saying, well, that's outside storage.
I would think outside storage would be required to be approved by.
So I'm sure, is this fit outside, like should this be approved by the planning board as opposed to the zoning board?
It will be subject to some type of planning board review. He just, his first step is to get the variance.
Always something to learn, but good, okay.
We're here first.
Okay, got it. Okay, I'm ready to go back.
No, that's, that's fair, we're all, that, good catch. Um, so, contrary to the public interest. So what do we do every time someone outgrows their building, we let them overbuild?
Well, this is an unusual property. Every time I go there, I'm like, I can't imagine that they approve this building. I go there a lot, um, and.
So does my wife.
So, do I think it affects the neighborhood? No, it's a commercial structure, it's. It's, I don't, I don't see it as affecting it.
So from the public interest, no impact. From the spirit, all right, from the spirit. So from the public interest, no impact. From the spirit, all right, from the spirit, I would argue, maybe.
I don't think, I, I just don't think it's got an impact on anybody's health, welfare, anything.
No, I don't either.
It's off the road, it's on his driveway, it's.
So then we could throw the spirit away and let people build right up to their property line.
That's not true, because if it was on a road or something, then it would have an impact.
Well, so we have a bigger butter here that has a big empty field.
Yep.
And if they were concerned, they could be here, and they're not.
I, I don't know. I guess we'll go back to number one, because I, maybe the public interest in this case, I could agree with that, would not be.
We had character of the neighborhood and then we had health, safety, and welfare.
So, um, so wouldn't.
Well, if he put it, we could argue about safety. If he, if we said no and we made him wanted, he put it to his building, that'd be a safety concern because you can't get around it. Yeah. There's no other place. I don't think it would be contrary to the public interest. It would actually be safer away from the building. He's, he's his own island down in there. He's sort of deadlocked. He's got that detention basin. He's got 102. Real busy. He's got Butrick Road, which is fairly busy now because of Elliott, but he also provides, he does something unique. And I, you can correct me if I'm wrong. He also owns the first building. You own the first building before you get to yours?
Yeah, I own, yeah.
You own them both?
A and B, yeah.
A and B. So he's provided additional parking and customers, like myself and others, go park up above to walk down because it's so congested in there.
At one point, the drive was around this area.
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah.
All right, well, I'm, we can step through them. I just.
So granting the variance, so let's get a consensus. I say would not.
I think would not.
Not.
Would not.
Yeah, would not alter the character.
Would not on the public interest for safety and character.
The spirit of the ordinance would or would not be observed?
I would say would.
I'd say would not. This is where I have a problem that the variance is saying, hey, you need these setbacks for the green space for all this, and this is against that spirit. It, it's, it's, it's a terrible problem to have, but he's, it's too small of a lot, is my point of view, but I'm not, I'm just giving you my opinion. If you guys are fine with that, I'm.
Well, right now, he has a refrigerated container that's on the property. He's trying to solve a problem with an unsightly container being there with clutter.
I, I just don't see any health, safety, or welfare concern. If there was traffic of, you know, public traffic coming through that, it would have a problem, but.
Yeah, but there's no more, yeah, there's no more public traffic back there because you can't, you don't go around anymore.
Right.
That's been prevented.
And there's nothing, and then you're up against a slope down into the next property.
Yeah, I, I thought it was just given my vote.
So the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed?
To me, would, would not. I said would.
I said would.
I'll say would as well.
I say would not. So we have.
Three to three woods.
Three wood.
Three woods. Sounds like a golf match.
I don't hit my three wood very well.
Granted, the variance would or would not do substantial justice?
Would. I would say would.
Would. And reasonings for the would do substantial justice?
Not being able to do it is a loss to him, and not being able to do it doesn't really benefit the general public.
Doing it doesn't hurt the general public.
Right.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties would or would not be diminished? Would not?
Would not. I'd say would not.
Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because there is or is not a fair substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property?
So looking at that, I don't know where else you could possibly put that.
If you want it to be close to the property.
I agree.
It's a very unique property in the way that it's designed and laid out.
Yes, very unique.
Yeah.
Perhaps the most unique in town.
Do that again.
Yeah, that's, I'm going to say that out loud.
I, I think there are is or is fair and relation, and substantial. Again, it, to me, it's just putting too much on a piece of property. Fairly new property that wasn't, he's outgrown it, I, I feel badly, but again, that's my point of view, but.
So that.
Consensus, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I just want to analyze this one last time. If, if that refrigeration unit being twenty by twenty, I mean, can it, can it come up to the, the front of the building and?
And in the parking lot.
Well, I get that, but there's also par, he, he owns both parcels. He has plenty of parking up on the hill. He has the limited parking anyways. A majority of everybody on a busy day goes to the upper parking lot anyways.
But do you want your refrigeration unit out where the general public is?
If it's, if it's hidden, if, if it removes a parking spot or two parking spots, does that, I guess I'd have to ask Laura, would that interfere with what planning approved to begin with?
It was. I'm going to make the assumption that when this was approved, it was based on parking calculations for everything, so the amount of parking spots.
Okay, so that's not even a consideration.
Were there, based on the use that was proposed at that time.
Okay, so he has no other alternatives.
So consensus? Unless we still go around? No fair and substantial relationship?
I agree.
I agree.
I say there is, but.
Three to two.
Yep.
We're good. Carry on.
Bernard, do you want to take those to put in?
I do. Thank you.
And the proposed use is a, is or is not a reasonable one?
Is.
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 I have to do this again.
It should be easier, though.
You can only hope.
Ditto.
Would that be a EBIT? No, a ditto.
Okay, do we have any comments or restrictions or conditions? Shall not be any larger than twenty by twenty? Complete with fencing? To hide?
So what are you saying, the fencing, eight-foot-high fence? Let's see what Mr. Mitchell put here. So apparently an eight-foot fence is high is allowed, so he's not needed that, so outdoor refrigeration. Uh, yeah, I guess you go, go, go with that. Unless people don't want you to.
I'm good.
You're good, you're good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion on case number 112019-3. Request for, for variance, do we vote, we'll vote on this one, then we'll go to the next one?
Yes.
For the variance for LZ 4 dot 3 dot 3 dot A dot 2 to encroach twenty-nine feet into the thirty-foot setback, thirty-foot side setback with the restrictions of the refrigeration unit not to be any larger than twenty by twenty with an eight-foot-high fence.
Do I have a second?
Doesn't she make that motion?
Yeah.
You can't make that motion.
Why?
I can't vote for it.
Why?
She's.
Because you found some of the criteria not to be met. I can make the motion.
She, she can, she can make the motion.
She can make the motion.
Okay. Yeah.
It's how she votes that would be more crucial.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So you learned something new today.
I did. I learn something new every day.
Me too.
Do I have a second?
The motion was to grant, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Aye. So now you did vote against something, so was that your point, that she can make the motion, but the voting would be the?
She voted against that motion, so it's three to zero. That's, everything's fine.
To grant.
You voted two.
You can't vote to grant.
You.
I.
No. If you are against one of the criteria.
Yep.
Then your vote should be against a motion to grant it. You can make a motion to grant. You don't have to vote in favor of your motion. So you made a motion to grant. It was second.
Oh, grant, yes, and then.
So the vote was, I thought, three to two.
To two, that's right.
Okay, I was just kidding.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay.
I got tripped up in the end. I was still thinking about the beginning.
Variance granted. I think we're going to start doing that because it's. That's, that's a good idea. Do you want me to read now or do you want me to wait till?
No, go right ahead because it's really a two-part thing, so you might as well do it that way.
In case number 112019-3, the request for the first variance from LZO 433A2 to encroach twenty-nine feet into the thirty-foot fronts, uh, the thirty-foot side setback, that variance was granted. The first variance was granted. So we're going to consider the second variance now, okay?
Okay. Appreciate it. So we'll go right into the, on the green space, go right into the five points. Is that fine?
Is that okay?
Do we have any different outcome?
Probably not, but we can go through it quickly.
Granted, the variance would or would not be contrary to the public interest?
Would not.
Would. Sorry, I got just.
Do you want this?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
The spirit of the ordinance would or would not be observed?
Would. Would not.
Would not. Granted, the variance would or would not do substantial justice?
Would.
Would.
Not.
For the following reasons, the values and surrounding properties would or would not be diminished? Would not?
Would not.
And owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship because there is or is not a fair substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property?
Is not.
Is.
Is.
You still, is not down there, Mitch? Same as. Okay, I just making sure your vote was counted. Is. Is.
Is no fair.
Is not.
Yeah.
We're killing her today.
Yeah, just like the other one.
You couldn't trick me that time.
It is.
I was trying to trick her.
Yep, not going there. You did make me look twice, though, thought I circled wrong.
I thought you circled wrong because you said is.
Yeah, because that's my vote.
Oh, that's your.
That's where it gets tricky. The proposed use is or is not a reasonable one?
Is.
And comments, restrictions, or conditions?
Do we state the same ones again, or are we?
You still want it, same ones?
Yeah.
Twenty feet by twenty feet? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for case number 112019-3. The second variance from LZO 4 dot 3 dot 3 dot B dot 1 to encroach fourteen feet into the fifteen-foot green space area. to grant. I will second. Uh, with the following conditions, that the unit shall not be more than twenty feet by twenty feet with an eight-foot-high fence. I will continue to second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
In case number eleven, twenty nine dash three, a request for a variance from LZO four point three point three point B point one to encroach fourteen feet into the fifteen-foot green space area for the installation of an outside refrigeration unit, fence, or retaining wall, that variance is granted with the conditions previously stated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alright, I know everybody wants to go, but there is, there is, there are some other businesses, now, you're all set, sir.
Eighteen hundred turkeys coming in tomorrow morning, five o'clock, I gotta load the trucks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, so, a letter from Lisa Drabek concerning the twenty nineteen Leadership Londonderry. Um, hi folks, due to unexpected scheduling conflict, we had to reschedule December's Leadership Londonderry session from twelve, twelve to Thursday, December fifth at four P M. in Town Hall. Uh, if you could let me know whether you'd be able to make it, or if you have any constraints, let me know. Um, this was one where we're invited to come in and give a little speech, or someone from the zoning board about, uh, how much fun we have up here and all that good stuff, and what it's about, and kinda educate other people that might wanna volunteer. Unfortunately, four P M. in the afternoon does not work for me, but I'm letting anybody know, it is.
Yep.
So if you would, that would be fine, we would love that, and you can talk about how much fun you have here, and it's really to kinda give folks an overview of how it works and all that, and. Um, so that, it did change, though, it used to be the twelfth, it's gone to December fifth at four. Um, the other thing I have is, um, it's time for the annual committee reports that I have to get in by Monday, December twenty-third. They go into the town report, if you ever read them. Um, I write them, and Laura, I presume you'll take care of the case numbers or forward them, or wait till the December case, 'cause it's a pretty close deadline. Due to the twenty-third, and our meeting's probably the. Oh, 'cause it's after that due date? Okay, so I'll respond to her two, just because it's.
I already have?
Oh, so you're good, that's fine, alright, so, but my other point was, if there's anything that somebody would like in there, um, feel free, if, I don't know if you've ever read it, I think, to people in town, and you folks, and everybody, and it's just basically gives the number of cases and plans, but if there's something you would like included, um, I don't mean to exclude you, so let me know prior to the twenty-third. Um, and the last thing, from my point of view, is, um, there's a letter from Kirby Brown talking about, um, openings on boards and committees, and people being ready for reappointment. So, um, below is the list of people expiring the end of this year, as in the past, once once the deadline of November twenty-fifth closes, I will send each one of you to Talent Bank forms on the new applicant, for all the new applicants. Once you have reviewed them, welcomed them, recommended them to the council, we'll be conducting council meetings December sixteenth. As chair, please reach out to current members serving on your committee who are up, who are, who committee, your, who are up, which means your time's up, and I'll tell you who you all are, and it's everybody but Mitch.
Isn't all of us?
It's pretty darn close, so anyway.
I feel like I just did it.
So here's the, yes, as chairs, please reach out to the servant on your committee who are up, and ask them if they would like to renew. They will need to send me, so you need to send me a letter if you wanna renew your commitment to this fun party.
Are we allowed to do that, to send him an email?
It's what we're being directed to do, to let the chair know, or you can send a formal email, um, or you could send it to Kirby, if you're against sending it to me.
No, it's just they.
It's supposedly, I think by the law.
Send anything to you.
Well, I know, but supposedly it's supposed to go through the chair, I. Um, the council will not be able to make any reappointments or accept any resignations unless you put it in writing. In this case, where they're not resigning, the time's up, they wouldn't need to put a resignation, just the intent to re-up, I would think.
I'm not understanding your question.
Well, it says, uh, they will need to send you or me a formal email stating how they would wish to move forward. The council will not take, will not be able to make any reappointments or accept any resignations unless they put it in writing. They will have to do so on or before the application deadline. They will not need to re-interview or fill out the form again, just an email, please let me know if you have any questions. So, um.
When is the date? What is the date?
Well, you, you're not, you're not up till the end of the year, the date is November twenty-fifth, they would like to know by November twenty-fifth, so it was not a lot of notice, but.
But it's a calendar?
Yes.
Year, rather than when you were actually.
Well, so there's, it's not clear here, so the people who are up are Jackie, Jim, Bill, Suzanne, and Brendan, so. And the zoning board has two people who get appointed for a three-year term, and then everybody else for a one-year term, so I don't know where you are, but you're your time's up, Jackie, Jim, Bill, Suzanne, Brendan. So please, if, if you want, if you want to, uh, re-up again, send myself or Kirby an email stating that.
And we don't have to re-interview?
We do have to re-interview.
Uh, they would, they will not need to re-interview or fill out the form again.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, so, for Brendan and I, people who are alternate members? Are there non-alternate members positions, and should, if we had an interest applied to those?
So typically, how, did you hear what Mitch was asking, if, if someone that was a member left, and, okay. Typically, we, we've appointed the longest alternate to the full membership. There's been a few times where we haven't stuck to that, I don't think we have a fast rule or procedure.
There is not.
Oh.
I'm willing to defer to longer members, but I just.
As a standard rule, so I guess it would kinda be if someone thought they're gonna be out, I know twelve years ago, I think I changed my position because I traveled so much, and then switched it back later in, in the game, but. So that being said, I think I've covered it, do you, uh, have anything else, you're good?
I do not.
Beth, I think is probably good, unless. So I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to end the Londonderry Z V A. meeting for November twentieth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?